Okay.
And we are live, Your worship.
Okay, so, thank you for coming in tonight. It's 5:06. I know we went on a concurrent with a standing committee meeting, but we're ready to start. So, call to order. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Harry, none? That's none, okay. Approval of agenda. You see the four items? Actually, five. Someone's got their mic open.
Right here. Can we postpone item E?
No, we can't.
I'm asking the council.
Yeah, no, what if I'm... You have to go through with these orders, Councilor Twill, you know that.
Okay, I'm going through you. Can we postpone that? I'm blindsided by that item being put on the agenda. I was just made aware of it here a day or so ago. So, I don't know why it's here tonight. I mean, it wasn't discussed at the last Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. And then, all of a sudden, it appears at a special meeting, and the question is, why is this appearing at a special committee meeting of council?
Okay, so, we have a couple of chairs that are here. There's the Chair of Parks, who dealt with it via email. And there's the Chair of Finance. Chair of Parks, do you want to go first?
Sure.
Excuse me, I'm speaking. Can you mute, because I'm getting off.
Someone's... Councilor Twill, you put on mute? Okay, go ahead.
Council Ramsey too, I think. Is he on mute?
No, I'm on mute.
Okay.
So, this is the funding...
Go ahead.
So, this is a funding stream that came to light last week, that I first heard about it. I forget what it's called. Peter has the name of it there. But anyway, it has to do with the green initiatives. We've always been told, as Council Yankoff overcame, when we were talking about the different facilities, that the governments had always told us there's a lot of money in these green initiative funds. So, this one is an initiative for Net Zero, or the arenas, with a caveat that if they're going to give us up to 75% to build a new rink, which this one is tagged at around 12 or 15 million. So, that means that there's a possibility of getting up to $11 million of the total cost to build this third pad. The requirement to get that money is that you have to tear down a facility that you're replacing. So, the money that they've been asking for, the 50,000, I believe, there's 10,000 to do a study on Simmons, and there's 40,000 for a study at Cary. Is that correct, Peter?
Correct.
Yeah, it's right here. Good.
Yeah, so, what was pleasing about this, guys, is that we were looking and hoping, and still hoping to get some money through Canada Games. If we do get a couple of million, and this process, it can give us up to $11 million, it's not going to cost the city very much money to build a third pad. So, we could look at $11 million now, and whatever the Canada Games may put on top of that. So, most people are paying $12 million, $13 million for a new ice surface. City can conceivably get this cheaper than, pretty cheap.
Councilor Deputy Mayor Cody, we discussed it yesterday. Did you want to add any information?
I think Council Bernard covered it off, Your worship. It was a financial ask, and it comes through Finance, and it's here tonight.
Okay. Okay. Any...
Yeah, can I respond?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Well, from what I understand, Council Bernard, there is no money for Canada Games.
Yeah.
So...
No, Council Twill. That hasn't been determined yet? So, you can't say that in a public meeting?
Oh, I can? Okay, well, I just did. Now, the second item is, you know, to ask for funding for constructing the third pad at UPEI. I can tell everyone here that's listening to this meeting, there's not many people in favor of a third pad going to UPEI. Okay, now, having said that, you can make up whatever decision you want, but I'm telling you straight up that there's no support for a third ice pad at UPEI.
Just a point of order, Your worship.
And then, the second thing is, to decommission Simmons Rink and decommission the pool. I mean, that's not what the community wants. The community wants a strategic plan for those facilities to be built on the Simmons site. So, how are we going, in order to qualify for funding, now we've got to decommission the pool and the rink?
Council Twill, we're now getting into the debate of the agenda item. So, I'm going to ask, do you want to move to remove it?
Yeah, I'll move to remove it, yeah.
Who wants the second item? Okay. The agenda is to move, let's move to... Who's going to move the agenda? Council Bernard, all I want to do is get the agenda going. You want to move? Someone's got their mic open again.
Does Council Twill need a second for that?
Yeah.
Okay, I can second it.
Okay. So, all those in favor to take E off of the agenda. Council McLeod, yea or nay?
Nay.
Council Bernard?
Nay.
Council Deputy Mayor Cody?
I was beginning to say this was a kind of a time sensitive ask. Do we have time to refer it and discuss it? Or is this kind of...
Again, it's only to study. This is not to make a decision on...
I think Council...
Turn off.
Council Twill, okay. Council Duffy, still on the table.
Pardon?
Your mic is still on. It's causing...
I was just about to vote.
Okay. So, Council Deputy Mayor Cody, the issue is, is that this is only to study. It's not to make a final decision on.
Your worship, if I may say something?
Yeah, just up against... Yea or nay?
Nay.
Nay? I can't hear him. Okay. Council Mc... Deputy Mayor Cody, yea or nay?
Nay.
Okay, Council McCabe?
I'm going to say nay, but I don't even, I'm confused.
Council Duffy?
Yea.
Council Twill? Council Twill, nay? Council Bernard?
Nay.
Nay? Or yea?
No. We have a rink to build, and Simmons has got to be replaced. It's sooner the better.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir, for that. Council Ramsey?
Nay.
Council Yankoff?
Nay.
Council Duran?
May as well go with nay, I guess.
Okay, so, there's, I have Council McCabe, nay, okay? The only one for yea is Council Twill, correct? Am I correct?
Yes, Your worship.
Okay. So, can we look at the agenda and move on? Just one second, I'm trying to get it here.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Council McLeod. Seconded by who?
I'll second it.
Council Ramsey, all those in favor? Yea?
Yea.
Do we have to do the road call for some of these easy ones, guys?
Yeah. Your worship, I'm against the agenda.
Okay, so, that's nine to one for the agenda. Okay. First place is reading up the zoning development bylaw. Okay, someone has their mic on. Mr. Kelly, do you want to read off the second reading?
Yeah, just stand by, Your worship.
Your worship, I think you and Council Twill are very close. And when Council Twill's mic's on, we're getting a lot of feedback. So, they're both off there now.
Do you want to, thank you, Council Bernard. Do you want to read the, do the second reading?
Yes, Your worship. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlatown zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2040, as pertains to the vacant property located on the corner of McCray Drive and Norwood Road, PID 192401, as attached, was read and approved a first time on December 14, 2020. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Council Duffy, seconded by Council McCabe. You need to turn on your mic, Your worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Council Duffy, Council Twill?
Pass.
Pass, okay. 10-0. Oh, Council Duran?
Pass, yeah.
Okay, I'll let me turn that off.
Be resolved that the said bylaw be adopted, moved by Council Duffy, and seconded by Council McCabe, Your worship.
Do you move the house?
Pass.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Pass.
Council McCabe?
Pass.
Council Duffy? Council Twill?
Pass.
Council Bernard? Council Ramsey?
Pass.
Okay, thank you.
And number two?
Next one, Mr.?
Yes, Your worship. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlatown zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2042, as pertains to lot 18-2 Sherwood Road, PID 455642, as attached, was read and approved a first time on December 14, 2020. Be it therefore resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and be approved, moved by Council Duffy, seconded by Council McCabe.
Shall it pass, Council McLeod?
Pass.
Okay, Council Verne, Deputy Mayor Cody?
Is this the Sherwood Road?
This is the Erstow Brothers apartment, multi-unit complex apartment complex.
Okay. Opposed, I thought there's some conflicts on this, but...
You're all right? No?
This, they're both on this one. No, it's point of order. Point of order.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa. Council Duffy, did you mention, made a comment?
Your mic is muted, counselor.
Monday night, yourself, Mitchell, can you take my comment? Monday night, Your worship, you and Council McLeod excused yourselves on this. Now, this is the second reading.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Your mic's muted, Your worship.
Council Duffy, thank you for reminding me. Thank you.
And me as good again.
Let's take another one out.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Cody, you have to take over. So, Council McLeod, we have to log out, or just tune out.
Don't participate. Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, no problem, Council Duffy. Okay, so, the motion was read. Charlotte Cary? Those opposed?
I'm all right. I'm for Cary.
Cary, okay. So, I think it's unanimous, Mr. Kelly, with...
All right, I'll read the other part. Be resolved that the said bylaw be adopted, moved by Council Duffy, seconded by Council McCabe.
Okay, Charlotte Cary.
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 Just stand by, I'll get the mayor back in, please.
Thank you.
Are you back on, worship?
Thank you, Deputy. And thank you, Council Duffy. I just got, I think she's there to move into this. Okay, we'll go to the next building code bylaw. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, Your worship, one second, please. Your worship, whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlatown building code bylaw PHBC.3, as attached, was read and approved a first time on December 14, 2020. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Council Duffy, seconded by Council McCabe.
Shall it pass, Council McLeod? Good. Council Verne?
Pass.
Deputy? Deputy Mayor? Council McCabe?
Pass.
Council Duffy?
Pass.
Council Twill?
Pass for me.
I have a question for the CAO. Can you please, there's no, there's no, Council Twill, there's no debate in the second, the second reading?
Okay.
You can't answer questions.
No, it's, Mr. Kelly, it's the second reading.
Yes, Your worship.
Yeah. Yea or nay?
Yea.
Council Duran? Yeah. Council Bernard?
Yea.
Council Ramsey?
Yea.
And Council Yankoff?
In favor.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the said bylaw be adopted, moved by Council Duffy, seconded by Council McCabe, Your worship.
Shall it pass? Council McLeod?
Pass.
Council Verne?
Pass.
Deputy Mayor Cody?
Pass.
Council McCabe? Council Duran?
Pass.
Council Duffy?
Pass.
Council Twill?
Pass.
Council Bernard?
Pass.
Council Ramsey?
Pass.
And Council Yankoff?
Pass.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Thank you kindly. So, the next item is the Energy Performance Contract with Honeywell. Do we have someone to speak to that?
We have Ramona on board, Your worship. Ramona, do you want to start with an overview, please?
Sure, just, Hamad's going to bring up the presentation just on his computer, if we can just wait for that. And did we decide to proceed with this in an open session?
And, Your worship, which do you wish to do?
Well, we're doing the open, we're doing the open session first, Ramona.
So, did you want this in the open, Your worship? Did you want it in the closed?
What's your preference, Ramona? Is it any top secret information? Or is it just open, transparent, and accountable?
I'm fine with the open. I just wasn't sure if that was the worship council to...
Is any concerns, please speak up. Raise your hand if you have any concerns about it being in the open session. See you none?
I think there's certain guidelines to follow, what's open and what's not. I mean, if this even meets it or doesn't, so, I mean...
Doesn't meet 119 A, B, C, D, E, F, yep.
Then it should be in the open session.
Perfect. Any other comments? Good. Okay. Let's go, Hamad.
Great. So, I'm just going to go through a few slides here, and then, there'll be lots of opportunity for questions, if you have any. So, we've talked about the Energy Performance Contract. We've had this project on the go for some time now. So, here's... Hamad and I are here. Oh, sorry, it sounds like there's a bit of...
Someone's on, and I'm just ready to turn off. Please, if you're not speaking, just turn off your mic. Try that, Ramona.
Okay. So, we wanted to bring a status update. Hamad is here, our energy coordinator as well. And we do have Mark Lanigan on the line also, if any questions come up from that side also. So, we've been working with city staff, as well as staff at Bell Alliance Center and East Link Center on this project for some time now, in partnership with Honeywell. And we wanted to bring you up to date on where we are at this point. So, initially, you'll remember our project objectives for this. We're looking at opportunities for how we can implement our community energy plan. We have set out fairly aggressive targets in that that would require us to meet some of our energy and GHG emission reduction targets. We are also looking for an opportunity to streamline some of our energy efficiency work. So, up until this point, we've done some of that work as piecemeal projects. We've done a few lighting projects here and there. And it does kind of make it challenging when we do it piece by piece, rather than taking a sort of concerted effort and looking at all our facilities at once. So, we were looking at sort of alternative options of how we could move forward with these energy efficiency. We're also looking at how we could use, make use of funding and financing tools that would support this work, as well as looking at how we can demonstrate the City of Charlatown as a leader in looking at our facilities and making those changes ourselves. A lot of our programs ask our residents and the business community to take some of those steps to be champions for energy efficiency. So, we want to make sure that we're really leading that charge in our own facilities, and trying out both energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. Go to the next slide. So, the RF pre-process, if you might remember, we put out a request for proposals last January. And at that time, we were looking for an energy performance partner that would work with us to develop energy audits of all of our city facilities, as well as facilities of the East Link Center and Bell Alliance Center. And the end product that we were hoping for is that they would come back to us with a full report of, these are your options, these are the opportunities that make the most sense for the city to pursue. These are some of the cost benefits that are associated with those, and that we would then move forward with the implementation phase. So, we awarded this project in March to Honeywell, and we've been working fairly extensively with them since that time to develop this report. So, just to back up a little bit, an Energy Performance Contract, essentially, what we're looking here is a self-funded project. So, those upfront capital costs that can sometimes be a deterrent to moving forward with a project, you're trying to look at projects that will pay you back through energy savings that will offset those initial costs. And you look at both sort of the cost savings, as well as different grants that can help support that as well. So, the project, that's what we mean by an Energy Performance Contract, is that there's guaranteed savings associated with the project. And the company that we work with guarantees those savings based on their calculations and based on those projects that you put forward. So, that's what Honeywell has provided here to us. So, we worked through several phases with Honeywell. Initially, we did an opportunity assessment with them. We did a sort of high-level look at all of our facilities. And then, we decided that we did want to proceed to a more in-depth energy audit. So, what we've done now is we've just completed step two, which is to develop all those solutions that the city would potentially move forward with. So, Honeywell's been working on the design and engineering of those projects. They've been researching grants. And they've been researching options that would be the best fit for our facilities as they are. And now, we have the output, which is the Energy Facility Renewal Report, which was in your package. So, if council determines they would like to proceed with it to the next step, we would move then into implementation. So, Honeywell would be the project manager and implement all of the measures that we agree upon in the contract. And then, once implementation is complete, implementation up to two years maximum. And then, the guaranteed period is that period where we audit our savings. Did we have the savings that we expected to receive? And are we happy with the results of it? So, Honeywell provides that to us in that they do a monitoring and evaluation phase with us. And then, we also have the option of auditing that as well, so we can ensure that we're happy with the results. So, through the solution development, I just want to sort of reiterate some of our process here. We worked with city staff from all various departments. We worked with staff from Bell Alliance and East Link Center. And they participated in each of these phases. So, we did a 30% review. Honeywell at this time kind of put every option that was on the table. And we helped them to refine that scope and look at what we would be moving forward with to the next phase. At the 60% review, we did that again. So, we looked at, they took a deeper look at some of the projects. Once we knew a little bit more about that project, we were informed about whether we would want to proceed or not. And then, we've completed, most recently, the 90% review, where they've sort of, they've prepared for us sort of a final program that they would see us pursuing. And we've had option to provide feedback on that. So, now, I'm just going to go into the three organizations, and I'm just going to give you an overview. So, in your package, also, we've done executive summaries for each of the three organizations. I would highly recommend you review each of these. They're fairly short. I think they're two or three pages each. But they sort of outline what the projects would be at each of those facilities. So, the total project, total project cost that we're recommending is $758,000 at the city facilities, that's plus applicable taxes. And this has a simple payback of 10.7 years. The majority of the work for us is LED lighting upgrades, as well as a boiler plant upgrade, some building envelope improvements, automated software for some of our building control systems, and transformer replacements. So, with these projects, we'd be looking at utility savings of approximately $64,000 per year, and additional operational savings of $2,500. We do have incentives identified to offset some of those costs to the tune of $64,000. And we would see a 16% reduction in our electricity costs, 13% reduction in our oil costs, and 7% in our district heat cost for the city buildings. For the Bell Alliance Center, we've refined the scope of their project down to $1.7 million. And this one has a simple payback of 13 years after incentives are applied. We would also see just over $60,000 per year for utility savings here, as well as $54,000 a year in operational and maintenance savings. And at this facility, we're looking at reducing electricity cost by 13% and district heat cost at 7%. And finally, with East Link Center, currently, we have a project at $2.6 million plus taxes. This has a higher payback at 19.7 years. But what this includes, we have the lighting upgrades, as well as a solar PV project. Some of these projects in this facility are deferred maintenance. They're projects that haven't been completed. For instance, they don't have the same ice plant controls and ice plant heat recovery system that we would have at the Bell Alliance Center. So, that would have a significant cost associated to it. But as you can see, we've got significant savings of $85,000 per year in utility savings. And we're reducing that electricity cost at the East Link Center by 30% and 9% reduction in the district heating cost. So, this slide just provides sort of a summary of what all the projects look, rolled together. So, total value of the project is just over $5 million plus applicable taxes. We've already secured funding. The $126,000 for the project development cost has already been secured through FCM. And we've identified an additional $124,000 that the city would be eligible for to receive against some of the implementing, implementing some of those measures. What we initially talked to council about was going with Honeywell for the financing of the project. We did weigh a few different options. And at that time, FCM provides low-interest loans to municipalities for projects of this type. And they also provide grants of 15% as well on projects over a million. So, we did look into that option quite in depth. And unfortunately, this project isn't eligible under the FCM funding. So, at this point, we're recommending that city consider this as part of the capital budget for next year. And because we are seeing such attractive savings associated with this project, we still think it would be a really valuable project to go with, even if the city was doing its own financing. Now, I should be clear, and you'll notice this Now, I should be clear, and you'll notice this in the energy facility report that's attached in your package, that there are a number of initiatives that we did not recommend as part of this project. It doesn't mean those projects aren't valuable. There's lots of things in there that the city could still pursue. And should we wish to proceed with an additional package of projects, we could do so after the completion of this project or in tandem with this project. So just want to put that out there to council that there is an opportunity still to expand the scope of this project. It may affect our eligibility with FCM and allow us to access that financing. But some of the projects would not have as attractive a payback as those that we've presented to you here. So essentially, what we're looking for for council tonight is that we're recommending that council approve the project in principle, subject to the final wording of the contract and a few small revisions to the project scope. So currently, there's not an inclusion of any solar work for the city facilities. We would like to include, with council support, a solar project for the city as well. I think that's a really valuable thing for us. We want to be doing, we want to be doing that. There were a couple of small changes that the Bell Alliance Center wanted removed from their scope. So we want to make sure that we've made those changes. And we are in negotiations right now with Cox and Palmer and Honeywell on the final wording of the contract. So if we have council's approval to move forward in principle with this project, then we would finalize the contract and get the final details together on their project scope. We have made a presentation to the Bell Alliance Center board, and they have approved in principle contingent on the endorsement of city council. And we will be presenting to East Link Center on Tuesday to seek the same. If all goes well with all of these steps, then we would hope to bring a resolution to council on January 11 to approve the final project and authorize the signing of the contract. And then we would move right into the implementation phase, which would be up to two years to implement all the projects as described. And then, following the implementation phases I mentioned before, we move into that measurement and verification phase, where we're looking at those guaranteed savings. Did we achieve the savings that we hoped to achieve and that were guaranteed by Honeywell? And so that both parties are satisfied with that. And then, as an additional step, as an optional step, either in tandem or upon completion of the project, we could look at moving forward with some of those initiatives and measures that are outlined in the EFR report that we didn't include in this project scope. So again, still some things there that would be valuable to our city facilities and help with deferred maintenance. I should note, too, we were talking about Canada Games funding, and that is a potential. So just wanted, it's still under investigation. As always, we're always keeping our eyes open for additional funding that could offset some of these costs. So I wanted to keep it brief and not get into too many details. But Hamad and I are both here, as well as Mark, too, if you have any questions on the project or on our approach, and happy to answer any of those you may have.
Thank you, Ramona. And Aman is here. So to do, uh, Aman, can you just take down the project management next steps? Because I can't, okay, great. Okay. Councilor Ramsey, do you have a question, sir? I'm mute.
Thank you, Ramona. And just said, you're looking for spenders here to 4.75 or something like that for this capital budget. And the only thing that keep popping out at me is that after three years' term, we're going to be looking at it whether it worked or not. Like, there's no guarantees, basically, that we will be sort of re, are we cooping all our money, right, in 10, 12 years? You just have this in three years' time, like, the whole thing could fall apart again. Is that going to cost us more money? You'd like to keep going with the project?
Thank you. Ramona?
Certainly. So your worship, how we have the contract structured and how energy performance contracts are structured is that the company that actually gives you a guaranteed savings rate. So the savings that are included in the presentation are guaranteed by Honeywell. If we achieve higher than those savings, those are recouped by the city. But if for some reason we did not achieve the savings that they've outlined and guaranteed to us, they would be responsible to make up that shortfall. So that's an important distinction. Now, we can continue in a measurement and verification phase with Honeywell for as long as we want. If we wanted to stay with them the full 16 years and check it every year, we could do that. But there is a cost of moving forward with them in that phase. So we would recommend that we do that for three years. Just ensure everything is, is shaping up the way we thought it would. And at the end of that three years, we say to Honeywell, we're happy with the project, and we move on from there.
Thank you, Ramona. Thank you, Councilor Ramsey. Councilor McLeod?
Thank you very much, Ramona, for your report. Has this gone to finance yet? I guess that'd be more of a question for Councilor Cody. Where are we with, you know, starting this project, sitting at finance? You hate to kind of be given an odd, you know, without having a full picture of where the city is financially and with COVID. You know, it is a worrisome thought. So just wondering if Councilor Cody could share some light on what his thoughts are with finance. Thank you.
Well, I think Ramona had indicated that there's some capital requests there. And we haven't looked at the capital budget yet. We'll probably look at that in January. So, you know, to be honest, I can't give you a great answer right now, Councilor McLeod. But, you know, I think it's here for, for consideration and to take next step forward if, if council so chooses.
Councilor McLeod, just, just one point. Ramona, do we not have an Environment Sustainability Standing Committee meeting on the 22nd?
We do. So your worship, we didn't go to the Standing Committee prior to going to council. And the reason we did this is because when we report on this project, we have to report to Public Works, Water and Sewer, Parks and Rec, Environment and Sustainability, and then Finance. So we did, you know, Peter and I spoke about it. And we did determine that it would be best in this instance to go right to Special Committee of Council, so that we could provide all council members the opportunity to weigh in, as that really is basically entire council by hitting each of those committees.
Councilor McLeod, second question?
Thank you very much. Yeah, so Ramona, maybe I misunderstood. So, but did you say you wanted to have this on council for, for the meeting in January?
Yes, yes.
So to go to all the other committees, I mean, you have time to, to, like, is that not kind of rushing if we're, if we're speaking for blessing here at night, you still should go to all the committees. Most of them are going to meet until early January, right?
So the intent, Councilor, is that this is part of our capital budget discussion? And because, again, as was stated, it would have gone to all those committees and gone to all of you anyway in some form. And that's why, at least, to move it to the capital budget discussion.
Councilor McLeod, just one second. Councilor McKay, can you just mute your button, please? Okay. Is, is that all right, Councilor McLeod? Any other questions? I'm sure there must be some questions.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. I see everybody?
I have a question.
Okay, Councilor.
Right. Thank you, Ramona, for your presentation. In previous years, I'm not sure the exact dates, but if you go back in previous years, maybe even 10 years ago, or in that timeframe, we did do energy audits. And I'm not sure if, if, if you have that information with the previous energy audits of these facilities, like Bell Alliance. I'm sure that we did go through this exercise. And what I was wondering is, what I was wondering is, going through that exercise, do we have an account of what was accomplished going through those energy audits?
Ramona?
So your worship, when Honeywell was working on, oh, Councilor, oh, okay. When Honeywell was working on this project, they took into consideration all of the energy audits that had been done to date. So we provided them with some of the work that had already been completed. We provided them with any of reports that we had done. So they used these in the development of their solutions to inform, you know, what had already been looked at, what was, where was there maybe a gap in the opportunity? So each of the facilities alone, I know, Cary, Bell Alliance Center, sorry, has completed quite a bit of different upgrades over the last number of years. And they've come to the end of that time where they are able to evaluate. I don't have the status of that evaluation, and I'm not sure whether that has been completed. But that's certainly something we can inquire as to whether any energy work of this type already completed has been sort of audited and reported on. This, to us, the decision is that it does include an auditing phase where we will be measuring and reporting on, on the savings.
Thank you, Ramona. I would like to, just from my own, my own mind, like to get some kind of a historical perspective as to all that work that was completed previously and, and, and what, what were the, what were the, what were the results? And how did it help with, you know, cost savings in the operation of Bell Alliance Center, Civic Center, and any other municipal facilities that we, that we, you know, we, we contribute both from a capital and operational and, and tap into infrastructure dollars as well. I'd just like to, if we can get some kind of chronological, some chronology of, of, you know, how that's evolved over the years. Thank you, Ramona.
Provide that, Ramona?
Certainly.
Any other questions, concerns?
May I raise a question?
You sure can.
So you're saying you're going to bring this forward for, like, the timeline that I presented as a resolution to the January council meeting to move forward with implementation. Would that be at that time? Or is council advising that they want this to be concluded in next year's capital budget?
That decision has not yet been decided. This will go to the finance and to council for the capital budget discussion. And so it may be premature at the first council meeting, but it may be some other time during the month of January.
Ramona, it does have to go to the Standing Committees. I, I think it should go back to Environment Sustainability, should it not, Ramona? Because it would be a capital budget request from Environment Sustainability? Or would it be all three departments?
It'd be under Public Works worship, under, under Buildings worship.
So that'd be Councilor McLeod?
Yes, worship.
And Councilor, and Deputy Mayor Cody as Chair of Finance.
But we are on a bit of a timeframe here to work with Honeywell, to worship. But it is part of our overall capital budget discussion. So ultimately, council will decide that it will come worship.
Yeah. And sorry, to clarify, at our last Standing Committee meeting with Environment and Sustainability, we had this included in the Environment and Sustainability Capital Budget. And at our meeting on Tuesday, the package went out today. It is also included in our Environment and Sustainability Capital Budget. It can be transferred to Public Works, that's fine. But we have moved it through that committee for final inclusion in the capital budget.
Right. And just to clarify, Ramona, the, the budget request is how much?
The budget request is 5.0 million. Yeah, 5 million.
And that's a capital request. Okay. And just to sum up, Ramona, you're not only talking about savings, but we're also looking at less wear and tear on the machinery that does operate electrically, correct? So there's eventual save, a cost savings there.
Yes, your worship. There's operational savings as well as energy savings.
And what about additional staff? Do we, will we, will it require additional staff to oversee this as part of a, eh, part of an energy saving program?
No. The, the value of this, your worship, is that it's turnkey. So Honeywell does, takes care of everything, project management, procurement, everything. Once we sign on, it's up to them to kind of make those things happen. Now, we will need to continue to stay as active participants and monitoring the project as we have been doing. But as far as the implementation of that work, that falls on Honeywell and their team.
Okay.
So I just got a question, worship.
Go ahead there, Councilor Bernard.
Ramona, the 5 million dollars was over how many years?
The 5 million dollars, they're going to implement over a period of up to 24 months. So the 5 million dollars would be expensed at that time. It would be, it would either be split over two fiscal years, or it would be in one fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions for Ramona? I know that Aman is on two, so he could be available for questions. So it will go back to finance, and it will go back to Public Works, and discussions hopefully back at Environment Sustainability. Good? Can we move on? Ramona, thank you. Aman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're muted, your worship.
You have to unmute, your worship.
Net zero design proposed public works building. So I see Scott Adams is here. Albert, who else is here? Paul Johnston, or maybe Paul's here for a couple of projects.
No, there's, there's Joey, Albert, and, and Scott on this one, your worship. And Scott, and Scott will open it up.
Scott's the lead person. It's your show, Scott.
Good evening, your worship. So, council, I guess, so I guess I'll give a little bit of an overview. Albert is going to share his screen, and I will hand it over to him shortly, as he's been kind of the lead on this project. But we bring this forward to, to council this evening to get direction from council on how we are to proceed with the design of our new MacLeir facility that will go up beside our existing facility, but have a driveway onto Bradley Point Road. So the goal is, we're trying to, again, meet the, our city's goals and making our facilities net zero. And so we've been working with our, our designer, Sable Ark, a local architect, on trying to achieve that. So they have run a few scenarios and have made recommendations on to what is the best approach for the city in terms of this, of this building. And so I'm going to hand it over to Albert to, to give you a brief overview of the building itself and a little bit of summary of the numbers in terms of building it to get it to net zero. So take it away, Albert.
Can everybody see my screen there?
Yes, go ahead, Albert.
Yeah. So the, the new City Works building, as you can see here, is going to be located at MacLeir off of Bradley Point Road. This is, this would be the main access here. And this picture that you're seeing now is just an overlay of where it would be. So if you're coming up Bradley Point Road, on your left-hand side, you would turn into here. That's parking lot, the building, and then some backdrop area. This second picture is just kind of showing another view of that. So Sable Ark, like Scott mentioned, did, has, is the architect that has been doing the design for us. And overall, their goal is to meet the city's goal and achieve a zero-carbon building to meet our zero-carbon energy standards. So to do this, they want to design a building that's well insulated, has low power use, and provide solar panels on site. But in this case, it would be on the roof. So this would help the city reduce greenhouse gases and meet our community energy plan that Ramona and Aman were speaking of in the last presentation. So financially, we want to design a zero-carbon building that would eventually pay for itself in annual energy savings. So the, just a little bit of a description, and you can see here, these are all just kind of preliminary designs of what the building will look like. So Sable Ark, they designed it to meet, to meet standards, to have water and sewer and parks and recreation in the building. The building would be roughly 25,000 square feet. And the main entrance would be located off Bradley Point Road. It would house vehicle bays, work areas, office space, and storage units. So it's basically a simple rectangular shape with a sloped roof. And on the roof, you would have the solar panel PV cells. So on here, you can kind of see a side view. So all of these bays are facing south. And you can see the slope of the roof as well. And then on the back, on the bottom here, you can kind of see some windows used for lighting for the cafeteria areas and the office spaces for water and sewer and parks and rec. This is just an overview, kind of a floor plan of the main building. So we can just kind of go into it. Coming off Bradley Point Road, you would enter, can everybody see kind of my mouse as well? Hopefully. So you come in here. Perfect. So you come in here through the vestibule area. Parks and Rec is located right here. This is area. Parks and Rec is located right here. This is their main reception. They've got a meeting in a boardroom that both Parks and Rec and Water and Sewer would jointly use if they ever needed to meet in there for any reason. You come through these hallways. This is a cafeteria that's shared by everybody. There's washrooms and some janitorial rooms there. Come down the offices, you have Water and Sewer workstations and office space, some more Water and Sewer offices. And then all along the bottom, you have 10 bays, five each, and mo, you have two larger doors for Water and Sewer and Parks and Rec. This is all basically equivalent to the storage space they have now. They're getting slightly more because of the sloped roof and mezzanine area. So above all of these office spaces, you would have another, another level that they could just use for storage. And that is really just taking into account the fact that the building was sloped for the PV cells. And then it's, it's not really too much of a cost increase or anything. It just gives them more storage. And everything else that they have here is pretty much what they have at, at the current building that they're in right now. So again, this is just kind of a side view of the building. So you see the Water and Sewer bays here. You see kind of one of their meeting rooms. And then above here, you see the mezzanine area. So for the mezzanine area, they would have access through the bays, and they would have staircases leading up there as well. They could have some storage in there. As you can see from here, it's a steel-framed building, roughly 30 feet on this side by 18 feet on this side. And then with the slope with the PV cells on top. So going through how Sable Arc designed the building, the first thing they had to do was create a base building that met National Building Code and National Energy Codes. So this is just the basic building. If we didn't wanna do anything energy-related, anything sustainability-related, that's what you would have to design in 2020 to meet those codes. But after that, they looked at how they could upgrade this building to make it zero-carbon ready. So they used thermal and mechanical improvements. You know, if we can make the walls a little thicker, better insulation, what can we do to make this building not lose that much heat? And then after that, to go zero-carbon design, they had to upgrade those systems. So upgrade the roof to achieve solar panels and anything else that, that would make it zero-carbon. So the goal overall was to have a building that produces electrical power equal to how much it's used annually. So Sable Arc did this design. They used their consultants, and they come back with a few different options for us. You can see on here. So I've got five different options. The first one, again, being the NECB compliant building, the base case, the total overall cost. And these are all Class D estimates, so they're not 100% sure. Plus or minus 20% is what Sable Arc and their consultant, their cost assessment consultant came back with. So based on the annual energy that Water and Sewer and Parks and Rec kind of use at MacLeir, and based on what they would have plugged in, and the office space, the bays, the heating and cooling, everything in the new building, they came up with a cost. To build the new base building would be about $5.1 million with an annual energy cost of around $29,000. The next option they looked at was a net zero-ready building. So they improved the building envelope, made the walls thicker, higher insulation with VRFs, which is variable refrigerant flows, and no solar panels. But the VRF is basically just the, like, heat pumps, regular heat pumps. This cost came up to 5.6 and annual energy cost about $15,000. After that, they looked at net zero-ready building, envelope improvements, geothermal but no solar panels. So using geothermal underground heating and not putting solar panels on the roof would come, would be about 5.9 million. Annual energy cost of about $14,000. And you can see the percentages here. It's just a cost increase above baseline. Baseline, again, being the base case scenario, is the average building. Option four is zero-carbon building. So you have envelope improvements, you use VRFs, and you have 72 kilowatt-hours solar panels on the roof. So this would be about 5.8 million. And the annual energy cost, they have minus $100, but that's basically zero. So it's saying you have enough solar panels to come up with a building that is pretty much producing all the power they use in a year. And then the fifth option, which is the option that Sable Arc and their consultants have said would be the best in our case, and this is the one that they recommend, is the zero-carbon building, envelope improvements with the geothermal heat pumps and solar panels on the roof. The cost for this is about $6 million. Again, annual energy cost roughly zero, and your cost above baseline is about 15%. So they recommend option five, the geothermal design, because they believe, and through studies, that it has the longest life expectancy with the least maintenance, operational, and replacement issues. Geothermal option also requires least demand for energy backup, for backup requirement. So if you would have any type of emergency situation, the geothermal option seems to be the one that would have the least issues. With the VRFs and option two, they need to be replaced roughly every 15 to 20 years. So any money that you're putting into it now, you have to replace it again. Again, that's going back in your costs, and you're not getting the payback. So looking at this, we, we talked to sustainability and to Aman and Ramona, and we came up and looked at some financial energy incentives. So FCM, they offer some incentives that we have applied for. But one of them is a 15% grant on 80% of the project cost. And then on top of that, 80% of the cost can be loaned at 1.47% over 10 years for up to $10 million. So with that, if we go without, with the option, the geothermal option, $6.1 million in the loan and the grant, we would basically get $168,000 difference with the, with the grant incentive. And the cost from the original base case would be just 2.8% more. Again, this is saying that we get the grant, we get all the funding from FCM, then we're only paying about $168,000 to go with net zero on the bill. So the cost improvements to zero-carbon with all of the incentives would roughly result in a five-year payback by saving energy costs. And we are still looking at other incentives that the city may be able to find through FCM and through other grants that could reduce these even further. So there might be a situation if we get more grants or more incentive that we reduce that $168,000 to basically zero. That's it. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Ebert. Any questions?
Yeah, right here.
Counsel Twill, just take, Ebert, can you take down the, okay. Take down the screen? Okay, thank you. Counsel Twill?
Thank you for your presentation, Albert. It was quite informative. And this new building will house the Water and Sewer utility as well as Parks and Recreation. With the construction of this new building, obviously, there must have been a lot of consultations with both departments, and both departments must have signed off. What, what would, if you look at a, look at a forecast, what would the lifespan be of this particular building? And with the growth of our city, has this been factored into the, you know, the size of the facility? Because the city's growing on an annual basis. And is there a possibility that in five years' time, that this building might not be big enough for both Water and Sewer and the Parks and Recreation Department? That's my first question.
Eric, could you answer that, please? Scott?
I guess I'll take this question.
Counsel Twill, turn off your, okay.
Perfect. So Counselor Twill, in terms of your question, so, yeah, so we've consulted with both Parks and Rec and, and Water and Sewer with their staffing, and they have been pleased with the design that we're proposing at the moment. And, you know, the life of the building is, can be as long as you maintain it and, and, you know, proper maintenance and all that. So, so the building has a, a long life ahead of its, is what we'd anticipate for. But in terms of expansion, and, and maybe Albert can bring up the photo, the overlay photo again for me. So we have designed the building in mind so that we can add additional bays to it, going back towards kind of the stream. So yes, back there. So we've designed it so that you can add additional bays, keep going back there to expand for future needs. So, yes, so we've kept that in mind as we go ahead and design it, because we do, we realize that the city is growing at a very quick rate, and so are our needs. So we can, this building can expand, and that's part of the design process.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. As a follow-up, one of the challenges the current building has, has had over the last number of years in all the departments is having the proper storage for, for aggregate and other materials. We've had to acquire land over the last number of years to be able to store those, those necessities. And does your plan here show, showcase the availability of, of land to be able to, uh, uh, storage all those necessary aggregates and materials that are required for whether it's Water and Sewer, whether it's Parks and Recreation? You know, Parks, Parks needs an opportunity to be able to put together the playground equipment. Will they be able to do that outdoors as well as indoors? And as a follow-up to that, this is built right beside a motel. And I wonder how that works in terms of the aesthetics and the ambiance, having a facility of this magnitude being built right beside a motel. Is, is there a conflict there? Or how does that work?
Ebert or Scott? Counsel Twill, turn off your mic.
Um, I guess in terms of your first question, for, you know, for, for storage and materials and such. So the building does have significantly more storage than either department currently has. So there's ample room for Parks and Rec or Water and Sewer to grow within the building in terms of storage capacity. So, so that's not a problem. You mentioned the playground sets. That is why on the Parks and Rec side, you still see that large bay, up at large bay door. That was one of their design requests, so that they can, in the winter months, they can put together their facilities or their playground structures and build them in sewers. Or there's room, there's lay-down room around the building that they can also put them together. So all, everything that departments do now, they will be able to easily do it still with this new building. And again, there's still room to grow around the building. So we've, again, kept that all in mind as we go through this process. We know there's been growing pains, and so we want to make sure that we meet the current needs of the city as well as the future demands for, for the city.
And the other part of this, Counsel, is that the bay doors are facing away from the hotel. And so they're, they're facing the other commercial parts of, of the park, and that will help mitigate sound over to the hotel.
They're facing the south side. Yeah. Thank you, Counsel Twill. Any other questions? Any other questions?
So the intention is that this will go forward as part of the capital budget discussion. But in an effort to get clarity when it goes, if, if council can indicate whether or not they do support the net zero approach, and we'll build that into our process worship.
Just, just before, I'm sure there'll be other questions. Scott or Ebert, it's 25,000 square feet, so I'm assuming it'll be 100 feet wide, 250 long? Is that correct, Ebert? Is that, Scott?
I'm not, I'm not certain of the exact dimension. Maybe, Albert, do you have them handy there?
And Scott, while he's looking for that, what's the current size footprint of our existing facility? Is it 20, 30,000 square feet?
I believe it's around 30,000 square feet, but Albert or Joey can correct me if I'm incorrect.
I, I don't have the exact dimensions of the new one yet, Counselor, but the current building is roughly, it's over 42,000 square feet.
42,000?
Yeah. Yeah, the one, the, the current MacLeir building is about 42,000 square feet. And Parks and Rec in this building had roughly about 18, 18,000 square feet.
And what about?
In the current building, that's their space that they currently use, but that's not.
Water and Sewer?
I'm sorry, that, that, yeah.
I lost him.
Mike is muted. Albert, if you can just unmute, please.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, in the, in the current building, of that 42,000 square feet, roughly, Water and Sewer and Parks and Rec is currently occupying about 18,000 of it.
Oh, the total.
That's not including shared spaces like the cafeteria, washroom, hallways, everything like that. That's why the, from that 18,000, you get up to about 25,000 square feet.
And, Ebert, just, just on, on, as you know from heat loss, those overhead doors are usually, what, 16 feet high, maybe 12, 14 inch wide? So are they gonna be automatically censored? Because that's, every time you open them in the winter, you lose a huge amount of heat. Is there some kind of mechanism set up to, to reduce that loss of heat? Ebert?
Yes, yes, Your Worship. That, that's what Sable Arc has been doing with this whole system. So those are gonna be automated. There's gonna be sensors everywhere. But that, those are the type of options we're looking at to make everything more sustainable. So in the base case building, when we looked at that, that was built into it, and improving everything we can before just adding solar panels, seeing what else we can do to save heat.
Okay. Counsel McLeod?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Thank you very much, guys, for your report. Maybe for council's benefit, just a little explanation on the quality, the air quality, plus the quality of the space that staff are gonna have. Like, this is a, this is gonna like change, change their lives up there tremendously. And I, I need a little more emphasis on just what this building is gonna do for, for the quality of work and, and the air quality itself, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McLeod.
Yeah, another thing I'd just like to add there on top of Counsel McLeod's point is, we're gaining a significant amount of parking spots, which we've been having an issue with at MacLeir with this new building, as you see up the front. Coming off Bradley Point Road, you're gonna have, we're gonna have about 30 to 50 more parking spots there.
It, it, it would be great to encourage staff to use the transit system because it's a direct line coming out, Mount Albert Road, Malpec Road, but that's something we can work on down the road. Any other questions?
Yes, just a, just a, another question regarding the property owner next door, the motel owner. Has there been any consultations or collaborations with the motel owner to ensure that, you know, they're okay with development, this development that's, that the city is putting together?
Scott?
Uh, Your Worship, at this point in time, no, we haven't.
Counsel Twill, just mute?
No, we haven't approached the, the hotel owners at this point in time. This area is to, is zoned for commercial for the purpose that we're doing. So we're well within the zoning for, for this facility. And, you know, we haven't had a complete design or anything of that nature either to notify them of it. So we thought it'd be pre, too premature to make any notification. We're, we are within the zoning bylaws for this facility and building.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Ebert? Okay. So do we have to put a resolution? What's the next step here, Ebert or Scott?
If council would just give us the nod to proceed to net zero design worship, we'll continue. If not, we'll go with the, the other base design. But we just need some direction and, again, bring this forward as part of the capital budget discussion worship.
Counsel Bernard, go right ahead there, Counsel Bernard.
I just wanna know, I'm trying to remember, we have a carryover in the budget for this building. Was it $3 million?
We did budget $3 million for this year. That's correct.
And the net zero cost is now projected to be, was it 4.6, 4.7?
Uh, $6 million with funding about $742,000.
I'm sorry?
$6 million with funding around $742,000 coming from the FCM.
Okay, so $6 million minus the $742,000.
So it's about 5.2, give or, give or take.
Yeah. Okay. And you have $3 million already carryover, so you're looking for another 2.2 million?
Correct. If council agrees with the net zero approach.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Bernard, do you have for net zero?
Oh, for sure. For sure. At least you get some cost recovery over time. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
But I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm just wondering.
But I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, so Peter, that, that's all the funding that so far you guys found for net zero?
Right, and there may be other pockets we may be able to go after as is Ramona and her, her, her program. So again, this is preliminary, uh, and we'll continue to search out other opportunities.
So, so far-
Sure, if we're looking for more money, Ramona can find it.
Right, so Ramona's case, worst case scenario, we're talking about two point two million more and that, that could even get, uh, reduced as we find, because there seems to be lots of money for net zero.
And that's based on current projections, counselor.
That's it. And it makes us as a promoter of net zero lessener carbon footprint. Counselor, uh, Deputy Mayor Cody, yea or nay?
Yea.
For nets? Counselor McCabe, no problem? Counselor Duffy? Counselor Duffy for net zero?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Ramsey?
Uh, I think, yea, uh, and I think Counselor Bernard was, uh, those are the questions I wrote down too, like, uh, if there was a three million dollar car, carryover and everything along that line, like, we could get away half decent with a fantastic building, so I guess I'm in favor.
Counselor McLeod, any problem?
In favor.
And Counselor Duran, is he there? Counselor Duran? Yeah. Counselor Duran? Maybe he went to cover, probably went for a cup of coffee. Okay, well, we got to the Duran anyways.
Sorry, Counselor Duran.
You didn't ask me.
Just one second, I'm just trying to get Counselor Duran.
Counselor Duran is there, worship.
Counselor Yankoff?
No, no, Counselor Duran.
Okay.
Um, your worship, Counselor Duran is now online.
Uh, he said yea. And Ramona, is there any cost savings? This could also work into Honeywell producing or making more cost savings, correct?
This is outside the, I'm sorry, I'm just sitting in, this is a, a works project, but, um, this is outside the scope of the Honeywell project, but it would certainly be city savings that we would get poured on and share.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
You muted, your worship? Your worship?
You can start moving on the project, right? We're all right with it?
They'll go back as part of the capital budget discussion worship.
Yeah, okay, keep that going quickly. Okay, thank you, uh, Scott Adams? Eber? And now the next, next item is E, ISIP, uh, Invest in Canada Infrastructure Program Stream, uh, Climate Change Mitigation Funding. Mr. Kelly, do you want to give some background on that first?
Um, Frank is here, but I will just open up here. So we were approached by, uh, the Infra- Infrastructure Secretariat, uh, that there is one stream that we may be able to access for the third pad. It's called the Climate, um, Change Mitigation, uh, Stream, uh, and, uh, the two rinks currently under construction on the island, um, in Tyne Valley and Rusko have, uh, entered in through this program and they are, uh, moving forward. For us, there's an opportunity to, uh, as was discussed, to get sufficient, uh, uh, substantial funding towards this program, uh, if it is, uh, a, a, a approved. And in order for us to move forward, there are studies that have to be met, so we have to prove the greenhouse gas reduction, uh, is part of this overall, uh, build, as well as the energy cost would also have to be proven, worship. So those two studies have to be done, uh, in advance of the application, uh, as well as some other, uh, studies that, um, that, uh, Recreation will have to undergo as well. And Frank can give you a bit more review of that worship.
Okay, Frank, can you give us some background, please?
Sure, so actually, so the, uh, uh, Peter mentioned about the, uh, the carry aspect of, that's one aspect of it, so that's the large report of it, part of it. But the other second part is, uh, since this third pad is replacing, uh, Simmons Arena, there's required for, uh, Simmons, uh, Arena and the pool to be decommissioned. And so we would need to find out if what the ultimate cost, uh, for the scope of work, including the rehabilitation as well. And, uh, we would have to go and hire someone, and this has to be part of the application, at least it is. Uh, so we need to also demonstrate that the retrofits, uh, the retrofits and upgrades to Simmons are not feasible and therefore it does not make sense financially to take these. Uh, so right now, we would have the, the contract someone to review the Simmons master plan, to review that was done back in twenty thirteen. We would also look at what's the cost for decommissioning of Simmons Arena, uh, looking into, you know, potentially adds materials in time, so.
Thank you, Frank. Counselor Bernard, do you want to follow up on anything as Chair of Parks, Recreation, Leisure?
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, you're getting seventy, up to seventy-three percent funding to build, uh, a replacement ice pad. We, we've talked about Simmons for the last couple of years, we talked about the lifespan, we, it's beyond its lifespan. Uh, I recall a number of years ago, there was a study done and apparently the chlorine leakage from the pool has been going on for years, has, has affected the, uh, metal beams that are in the ground that hold the rink up. I talked to staff and the rink's actually sinking. Whenever they've, uh, done some paving in the, uh, the parking lot, they noticed that the, 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 uh, building is down a couple inches. They'll, they'll tell you. So you know what? Um, council and all agreed on the report, the, the arena report, council agreed that they were going to put this third pad on carry. Uh, we were looking at probably seventy million dollars of city cost. Right now, we're down, uh, to, to, to two nine, and that may go lower. That's, to me, is a no-brainer.
Counsel, Counselor Duffy, did you raise your hand?
You muted, Counselor Duffy. Sorry, Counselor Duffy, you muted?
I, I, I think it's great, it's in my ward, the rinks like Cody Banks, they're, they're getting up in age and, uh, it's like, uh, an old car, you can't afford to have it anymore, you're gonna vote, get something new going for you, so, uh, I, I think it's a great addition to the ward and a great addition to the city.
And just, Mr. Kelly or Frank, again, this money that we're voting on is to study, just repeat what it was, Frank or Mr. Kelly?
It's to, uh, uh, you have to do a greenhouse gas reduction, uh, study, your worship, for number one, which will be done by, uh, Kerry. Uh, you also have to prove the energy reduction cost with the new versus the old, which is also involving a study. And then we also have to do a condition, uh, uh, analysis of the, um, a Simmons and determine the cost to, uh, to decommission that operation, to your worship. So total cost that we're asking for this evening and I read out, I read out, uh, the, uh, the motion if you wish, and then we can go for fifty thousand worship.
I just have another, another, I'm gonna, thank you, worship.
Could, uh, Counselor Bernard or Counselor Yankoff for counsel, can we just put the resolution on the floor and then open it up for debate?
I'm, I'm, irregardless, yes, sure.
Can you move it? Do you want to move it? It's moved by-
They're moved, I have to put on, it's moved by Deputy Mayor Cody, second by Counselor Bernard, that the City of Charlestown approved forty thousand additional capital funds to be added to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital budget grant for Capital Area Recreation Inc., Kerry, to cover associated costs to undertake the required reports and other expenses during the, um, submission of a funding application. And that the city, uh, and that the, uh, City of Charlestown approved ten thousand additional capital funds to be added to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital budget for the Parks and Recreation Department to engage in the necessary professional services to compile information on the decommissioning of, of Simmons Arena, your worship.
Okay, uh, Counselor, uh, Counselor Bernard and then Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you, worship. I, I just want to, first of all, I guess I should, uh, thank, uh, our CIO for, for finding this fund, the CCMS fund. Um, and this is quite a saving for the City of Charlestown that this actually does go through and, and like I say, what I read, it was at least seventy-three percent of funding, uh, coming from the federal government out of that climate change mitigation stream. Uh, but I did want to add, um, you know, when we're talking about removing Simmons Pool and taking this building down, uh, that by no means is saying that, you know, in the future, we're not going to replace the pool or there's not another sports structure that can go up, uh, where this one comes down. This, but right now, as part of this funding, as part of the criteria, you, when you, if they're going to give you this kind of money for a replacement rink, they want to know you're replacing a rink, so one has to come down.
Thank you. Counselor Yankoff, sorry I missed you there earlier. You have the floor.
That's, that's okay, your worship, thank you. I'm probably a bit premature, but I just didn't want any of us to forget about making sure that when this rink gets completed, that we make sure that the user agreement, um, states that, you know, that the citizens of Charlestown get, you know, uh, first dibs at it versus, I know that there's been some talk about the university and the other people having it, I don't know if it's true or not, but I just wanted us to be mindful that, um, the residents got, um, lots of ample opportunity to use the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yankoff. And just for, as a reminder, eighty-five percent of the board membership, including the chair, are city reps, so we can send our changes to the agreement through them. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Counselor. Thank you. Um, just to follow up on Counselor Bernard, um, the monies in the cost savings, that monies could be spent on a new facility and a new pool at Simmons, at Simmons location now. So we're not prohibited from spending that money, it doesn't have to be spent at UPEI, it can be spent at Simmons, where we can replace the rink and replace the pool at that site in the community, where it's truly a community facility as opposed to spending another eleven million dollars at UPEI. So we do have that option. I, I just want to make that clear. And if I'm wrong, I want someone to clarify that. We do have the option to spend that money on, on the Simmons campus.
But again, Counselor Twill, I think Counselor Bernard stated that the John, Jonathan Hack report, you're, you're, you're still on, Counselor Twill?
Sorry.
Uh, the Jonathan Hack report, he presented it to council, I think there was a vote taken, and I believe it went seven, three, to go with his recommendation. So that's, that's the, that's the router, the avenue we're going down. But again, I think it was stated by Mr., or Counselor Bernard, that this green fund, and I, Counselor Bernard, I'd like to, I know we thanked Mr. Kelly, but Pamela Williams with the province was working with Bo- Paul Gottfried at, at TIE on this same agreement with the other municipalities. So, uh, again, this is another partnership with the province and the city, uh, trying to improve, ameliorate our facilities here in Charlestown, Tyne Valley and North Rusiko. So, uh, I, I think we're, we're going down this path and tonight's resolution is to allow the studies to go ahead.
Yeah, can I follow up in just the comment you made, your worship, as you're speaking from the chair? Um, yeah, that was Jonathan Hack's recommendation, it was an option to report. We did not vote on that by resolution to spend the monies to go to the University of Prince Edward Island. But I guess the question I have for you is, who did Jonathan Hack consult and collaborate with? Could you outline for me, and I'd like to get the times and the dates of all the user groups that Jonathan Hack, he was paid a hundred thousand dollars, taxpayers' money, in the last year? So can, can the CIO or the manager of Parks and Recreation, just to up a brief, I'd like a copy of all the meetings, times and dates of all the user groups that Jonathan Hack consulted and collaborated with and, and where they all agreed to build a facility at the University of Prince Edward Island? I'd like to get that information, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think, uh, Counselor Twill, his first recommendation was to construct a new fifty-two hundred, fifty-five hundred seat, uh, sports entertainment cultural facility, then he gave some options. What's that?
Point of order, you know?
Uh, just, just to be, just to be, Counselor Bernard, just to be finishing this, so that's where it came in from. Go ahead, Counselor Bernard.
No, I just find more often than not, we go over conversations where decisions have been made months ago. This was all talked about, we've had these conversations over and over again, decisions have been made, and now, you know, when we have a resolution for some funding, I find over and over, old conversations keep coming up in the public forum. When we've had these decisions, we've made them, council has voted, and, and we're supposed to be moving on, we're into it, we're into it now where they're doing design at Kerry, here's a, here's a stream that, and I know the problems, and mentioned that, that their Tyne Valley and Rusiko ones are under the same stream. Um, so it's, 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 we all, everybody knows we wanted to replace Simmons at some point. So all these decisions that you already had, council voted on.
Are you calling the question?
Call a question.
Question, okay, call the question. Okay, Counselor Yankoff, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey? Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Cody?
In favor.
Counselor Verde?
In favor.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
Disagree with the recommendation from senior management, both in City Hall, Parks and Recreation, to go to UPEI.
Counselor Bob Duran?
I, yes.
Okay, nine to one. Okay, so the next item we have is going into a closed session. Um, so we do have the package there, so I, I need a resolution to, to go into a closed session? And that's, that's under section, uh, one nineteen subsection one E and F. So it's moved by? Sorry?
Counselor Duffy and Counselor Ramsey put up their hands, worship.
All those in favor? Okay, so Mr. Kelly, can you move us into a closed session?
Just stand by, please, worship.